And let's start with some prayer. Well, the Lord be with you.
And also with you.
I just pray. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here today to talk about the many ways that you are breaking into our lives and the ways that we serve you. I ask that you bless our time together, give us patience with this technology, which I will not use a webinar again for a town hall at this point, but just guide us and give us patience, particularly as we finish up the last legs of this really long car ride that we have been on, as our Canon to the Ordinary shared this past week. Protect us, bless us, and just guide us. In your name we pray. Amen. Well, thank you, friends, for joining our town hall today. Our purpose for gathering today is to update you on where we are financially as well as on our regathering plans. As we all, I think, can agree, 2020 was a very challenging year from a number of perspectives. We finished financially 2020 with a deficit in our budget. Our pledge income came in $58,000, less than what was pledged for a number of reasons. We had a number of deaths in the parish. Some folks were out of work and were not able to fulfill their pledge. And we were able to reduce that deficit by $20,000 with some cost-cutting measures. But that still left us with a significant deficit of $37,000. The good news is that we were able to take advantage of the PPP program to cover that deficit. And so we actually closed the year in a really good place. We actually had a little bit to help us in this year of 2021. We're not planning on making any major changes to the budget in the coming year, but we have, we do have a significant deficit. In this year, we have, we received 322 pledges, of which 22 were brand-new. And that means that 99 folks who pledged last year have not pledged yet for 2021. And so currently, what we have pledged is $841,000. And we've missed our target, which we, to just maintain where we're at right now, it's a million. And so right now, we're $158,000 short of what we need in order to just maintain where we're at in, for 2021. We had, as I said, 22 new pledges. And the, our average pledge this year is, was actually up by $135. But we, as we compare ourselves to the rest of the church and the rest of our diocese, we are, we are actually below the national church in our average pledge. The average pledge for a resource-sized congregation in Maryland is $2,968. At St. John's, our average pledge, and we are a resource-sized parish, is $2,651. And so we're actually below the, by $317 for the Diocese of Maryland. And nationally, the average pledge is $3,064, which, you know, we're, we're below that, obviously, as well, by about $100. I did want to give you a breakdown of where we're at with, with our pledging. 20% of the parish pledges below $1,000. 31% of the parish pledges between $1,000 and $1,999. 19% of the parish pledges between $2,000 and $2,999. 10% of the parish pledges between $3,000 and $4,000. 4% of the parish pledges between $4,000 and $5,000. 11% of the parish pledges between $5,000 and $10,000. 4% of the parish pledges between $10,000 and $15,000 a year. And 1% of the parish pledges between $15,000 and $30,000. You know, it's interesting that this year, anecdotally, some of our stewardship folks have shared, in talking to people, why folks have not pledged. Now, we do know that we've had some people leave the parish. We know that through death, we're moving. And some people have, have lost their jobs. But what's really interesting is that some folks that have not pledged this year or reduced their pledge shared that because they're not in church right now, they don't feel they're getting the value for their pledge, which is kind of a pay-for-services mentality. And certainly, that's not what God calls us to do. Their kids are no longer in the program, so they don't support the parish. "The church doesn't represent my political views," or "isn't doing all of the societal changes and transformation efforts." I think it should. And while some of these reasons are certainly understandable, the reasons that some folks haven't pledged this year seems to focus on personal needs and really have not a whole lot to do with what God's calling us to do as followers of Christ in community. And so I think we really need to be clear about why we pledge. Now, all of you that are on this call, I know you are all faithful members, and I am grateful for what you do. And I know I am preaching to the choir right now. So I don't want any of you to feel bad about what you've pledged. There's no shame or guilt here. But I really do think we need to be honest, and honest with our fellow parishioners, who may not be participating in the life of the church and yet reap the benefits of all that God's doing through us in this community. And so what I'm asking those of you that are here that are so faithful, I am asking you if you can increase your pledge and really think about sacrificial giving this year. Because with $158,000 deficit, that, that's really significant. That means that we, if we can't make that up through the PPP program, or if we have to pay back the PPP program if we get that this year, then we will have to lay off staff. I mean, we are at the point in our budget where we are pretty bare bones. And so I just want to be honest about that and let you know where we stand. And while the Vestry and our stewardship committee really is continuing to work to close the gap in our pledging, we need help. We need your help if we're going to continue to reach out to our community. You know, the standard, the biblical tithe, which is 10%, which is a pretty high standard. And, you know, many of us aren't there yet, and, you know, for a variety of reasons. But if you think about what the median income in Howard County is, it's $148,000 a year. And if everybody in the parish pledged 2.5% of their, of their income, we would easily reach our pledge goal. You know, it's taken me almost 15 years to get up to the tithe. But for me, it's a way to express my gratitude for all that God has done and to be able to really participate in making a difference in the world. And so I know that you all care about the church and you care about God's people. I would like to ask Joe Camillo, who's a member of our stewardship team, if he would be willing to speak a little bit about his, his understanding of pledging and the challenges he sees and what excites him about what we're doing at St. John's.
Well, thanks, Anne. I appreciate you reaching out there. I am proud to be on the stewardship committee, and I'm, I'm proud of the work we do. I have to say that personally, what I'm, I'm really trying to do, and first of all, before I even go there, Anne, thank you so much for your candor about some of the things that we've heard in the community. I think it's a, it's very important to be very open about some of these feelings that, that go on in, in the community. And then your statement around, you know, the focus, where our focus should be when we think about pledging, I really think when, what I'm trying to reorient, reorient myself around is, what is the purpose of these resources? The purpose of these resources is sharing God's Word with the world. It's doing good for others and doing missions. It's caring for others. It's maintaining the house of worship. And so I'm trying to, in my conversations with folks, orient around the things that we're supposed to do, pushing out into the world and into our community, besides taking care of our, our parish itself and our community itself, but pushing out into the community. That's what God asks us to do. And without resources, we cannot do that. We cannot push God's Word out into the world. And so those are some of the things I'm thinking about, some of the things I'm talking about when I, when I'm, when I'm speaking to folks. And obviously, I can't, I can't push my views or ask you to do anything that you don't want to do. You have to prayerfully consider for yourself what you want to do in your world. But, but for Jackie and I, we will, you know, obviously, we will help contribute toward the goals that you've put forth here in more ways than we already have. So I think with that, I'll, I'll pass the mic back to you, Anne.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. I really, I do appreciate all that you do and just the many ways that you're making a difference in the world. So I'm just really grateful. Our whole stewardship team is actually pretty remarkable and a very dedicated group. And I'm just, I'm just so pleased with the work that they've been doing. We do have another, have other members of the stewardship committee on this call. We've got Mike Runge. Mike, do you want to share anything?
Sure. I mean, I don't like to follow Joe, but, you know, okay.
Sorry to do that. I know.
I thought I was going to be the opener, but anyway. I don't know, you know, I mean, stewardship for me has always been, I, I just think about the word. I think about, what is a steward? A steward is somebody that's called upon to care for something that, somebody, somebody asked, somebody else has given them something valuable to take care of. God's given us something valuable to take care of. The earth, this community, the place where we live, yeah, the roof of the church, we have to take care of that, too. All of these things are things that, that we love and we value, and it's part of why we're members of St. John's. And, you know, I feel called to take care of that. You know, this has been a challenging year. I think a lot of what the stewardship committee has talked about is stewardship of our community, right? Stewardship of each other, stewardship of the connections that we have each other, with each other, that give us strength and put us in a place to be able to do what Joe's talking about, go out into the world and, and spread God's Word. And I, you know, I think this is just a strange, it's a strange year. It's a strange year for us to have to focus on, on that kind of stewardship in a way that we haven't thought of before. And it's hard to do when we're not seeing each other in person. But I don't know, I, you know, for, for Sharon and I as well, I mean, this is our community. This is the place that, where we stand and gather strength to go out into the world. And we'll also increase our pledge to, to, you know, to show the importance of this community.
Right. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. Lauren Brown and Beth Davis are also on our stewardship committee, as is Brian Stone and Chi Su-Hung. If either of you would like to add anything, please speak up. Okay. And on that note.
I think, Lauren, you were muted.
Lauren, you there? Let's see. I'm looking for Lauren. I don't see him there. So, all right. As far as our, our budget and where we're headed, the Vestry will be voting on that at our February meeting. And Jordan has added some notes in chat about, we've had some questions on what the PPP program is. And it was the Paycheck Protection Program. And we're, not-for-profits were allowed to apply for it, which we did in the first round, and which we've done in the second round as well. And part of the program, in order to get the loan forgiven, is that you cannot lay off any people. And so that's an important part of what, what we've done. We made the decision, the Vestry made the decision, that in a pandemic, do we really want to let our folks go? And so, you know, no. And so we, we applied for this, and this, the first grant was forgiven. So it went from a loan to a grant. And we're just thrilled because that really, really helped us out this year. Also, it helped the school out this year as well. They were able to keep all their teachers, didn't have to lay anybody off. And I think I heard last, at the end of last week, that they also were forgiven their first grant. And I don't know if they've received their second grant at this time, but I'm sure that I've been, I was gone last week. And so I'm sure I'll probably hear about that this week when I get back to the office and I'll make sure that I share that with you. So that you're aware, this past year, or in 2020, we had to provide some support to the day school because their enrollment numbers were down. And this year, because enrollment has been so much better, and Lori Denbo, our new head of school, has done such an amazing job with the staff and working with enrollment, that they were actually able to pay the church back $100,000, which is a portion of what they owe St. John's right now. And I'm, I think, since I've been here, this year is the first time that this has happened in four years. And so, you know, the school is, is gone above and beyond in regards to, you know, paying back and, and holding their own. And so that you're all aware, that the school pays 80% of the mortgage on our school building. And those are spaces that we use and have been able to grow our ministries because that space has been available. And so I am, I'm thrilled that we're, we're able to use that space and eventually, when we get through this pandemic, be able to rent some of that out as well to engage the community even more. Katie Bachman is on this call. And Katie, if you'd like to speak a little bit about, as a member of the Vestry and financials, aware of our financial situation, and as a member and pledger, would love to hear from you.
Yeah, thanks, Anne. I was just thinking about when you all were talking about this year, and some people saying, "Well, I just don't feel like I'm getting value for my money," or "I'm not as engaged this year." And so it's made me reconsider what I'm pledging. And I think, sometimes it is definitely different. It's different. And we don't have the same personal connections in, like, literally in person, the physical act of singing together, which I know means so much to so many people. But then sometimes, if I back up and I think about March, and I think about how scary March was, and I even think about now, and it's still scary. And I think if we flipped it around and think, what if we didn't have even what we have right now? Like, can I imagine what that would feel like? So, you know, the last couple weekends, when it's been snowy, and I've sort of had this, "Oh, I wonder if we're going to have a live service this morning. I wonder if people have been able to get into church." And this morning, sort of seeing the relief of, "Oh, yeah, wow." When I see Jordan up there in the, you know, in the choir loft playing and thinking, yes, people came through the snow for us. People are showing up, and I'm looking at Lucia's face right now on the screen, which is making me happy. People are showing up at 9:00 in the evening to pray with us. And I don't do Compton every night, but there's some nights when I need it, and it's there. And there are times when we've all been scared, or lonely, or uncertain, or dealing with grief in this last year. And again, I sort of think about, but what if St. John's weren't there? What if there weren't a staff member I could reach out to in this time of need? What if there weren't sort of a centering, grounding time for reflection to help me remember what's important and what really matters, and the reassurance of eternal life in all of this? So I think that's, yes, it's different, but arguably, the services that St. John's is providing, and some of them are way under the radar, and people don't even see them unless they need them. But they're there. And so if people want to be contributing to sort of COVID relief in our community, I think we can't underestimate what St. John's is doing in that regard right now. And Anne was just talking about the day school. And when I think, and I am a teacher, and I'm fortunate to be at a private school that is in-person, five days a week, preschool through 12th grade. And I know what a difference that's making for our families. And St. John's Day School is doing that as well. You don't have to be, but if you want to be, you can. And again, I think about the, the sacrificial giving that that is on part of the, the staff and the teachers and everything. So that's just my perspective on why now even more I feel called upon to pledge out of thanks to God for this community.
Thank you, Katie, for that beautiful, beautiful testimony. That was, that was lovely. You know, and as Katie said, there are a lot of things that are happening here under the radar. We're providing, clergy and staff are providing services for bereavement, for funerals. We've been able to continue our Walking the Mourners Path program. The Pastoral Care Commission is, has been contacting seniors, anybody over 70, as often as weekly or as needed by a particular person. Mike Runge and his work with our Gathering Tree, we've been able to contact parishioners, and we'll be doing more of that until we're out of this pandemic. Our, our youth leaders, through the use of technology, are still able to have classes and be in relationship with kids and, and meeting them here up at St. John's outside when the weather allows it. And so there are so many ways that we're still connecting with, with folks within St. John's, but also outside of St. John's. Every month, we're providing food on Food for the 15th to folks that are food insecure in our community. Sharon Runge and the Outreach Commission raised over $7,000 to provide food for various organizations within Howard County. Our Matthew 25 grant programs allowed Church of the Guardian Angel to support their food pantry in Baltimore. There's so much that's, that, that is happening to, to really show God's love to the wider community. And for me, it's just such an honor and privilege to be part of that. And so I thank all of you for all that you're doing. And it's just so good to see your faces on the screen this morning, know that I, I do miss you. Before we move on, I, I do have, Jordan Schlick is here, and he's our treasurer. I do have one question on what's our average Sunday attendance. It's, you know, it's funny, it goes between 300 and sometimes 600 or 700 people that, that check in to our services on a Sunday. And what, how we're keeping track of that is we get so many views on our Facebook, live as well as our YouTube stream. And so all the views that we get on a Sunday that are longer than a minute, those, those are people that are checking out or are participating in our services. So we're actually, our reach, I think, is larger than what it, what it has been when we were meeting in person. It's very different, but I'm just, the folks that tune into Compton on an evening, sometimes 69, 70 people will pray with us on, at Compton. And Sally Goss is a favorite when she leads Compton. Sometimes, you know, she has over 150 people that will check in. Or when Joe Hart leads Compton, he has the entire GMBC community watching, and we'll get 500 people praying Compton. So those are some really remarkable things. And, and so that you're aware, not all churches are doing this. My husband is, the Works for a Church in Washington, DC. They haven't had live worship since March. They report a morning prayer service. That's, that's it. And so when I think about, about all that you're doing here, it really is just a remarkable witness. So any, any other questions for, you know, if you want, want to know anything about our finances, Jordan is available to answer. So I invite you to put that in Q and A or in chat. Otherwise, I will move on to our, the gathering, regathering information portion of this. First of all, so that you are aware, Mike Runge is a superstar. That, he's just a superstar. So he is our COVID czar. He does all of our statistics of when we can gather. And we put together a, a proposal for, that the Vestry approved, of when we can start doing in-person worship. And it, it means that our numbers have to be at a certain place. And so I'm going to try to share a chart with you right now that Mike put together. And then I'm going to share some information from our diocese. So let's see if I can get this chart up. Oh, yeah, here we go. Okay. So this chart right here shows the number of cases per 100,000 within Howard County. And so we set criteria for the church, for us to regather, that for us to add in-person services, to add one, to have people attend our livestream service, that we need to drop below nine for a week. In fact, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to let Mike explain this because he can do it much better than I. So Mike, this is all yours.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Yeah. So this particular metric is one that's become pretty common for a lot of jurisdictions to use across the country. It, it measures the number of cases per day per 100,000 people. And it's smoothed, it's a seven-day average, just to, you can see the dots are kind of noisy, but the smooth line is pretty good. And, yeah, and so we did a lot of work in the fall to try to, to try to figure out sort of what level of cases in Howard County represented a tolerable risk for us. And, and we did that by thinking about, well, one of the things we focused on, we did think about risk to parishioners attending a service, but we also thought about the risk to the clergy, you know, as that, as sort of concentrators of risk because they're at all the services on a weekend. Yeah. And so when this number drops below nine, I mean, we've got this kind of fancy thing that kind of works like your thermostat to figure out when we can open or when we would have to close again. But when this drops below nine, this, this graph is, so this graph was last week, and we were at 23. I think I just saw today, we've dropped down to 18. So, you know, things are, things are headed in the right direction. And, and the hope is that with increased, I think, 10%, 9.7% of Howard County's been vaccinated, has the first shot so far. So as that increases, you know, that's going to help reduce transmission. So things are headed in the right direction. Yeah. And so we're just trying to think about ways to, to manage the risks in a safe way. We've also, Mimi could talk about this, but when we do regather, we've put into place all kinds of protocols to reduce the risk of transmission.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I will, I, I do want to share with you, and then if you have any questions for Mike, please put them in the Q and A or chat, and we'll, we'll ask those. I attended a briefing of our, that our diocese held on Wednesday. And basically, you know, they reinforced what Mike has said, that positivity rates and cases have been decreasing, but they're still far from being where they were this summer and early fall. And actually, three counties in our diocese have had a slight uptick in the last week. And now that the South African variant is in Baltimore, that may affect where we're at, where we are as well. Our diocese has a team of active members of congregations that are virologists, epidemiologists, with particular expertise in older population, PhD experts on health security. PhD experts on health security with expertise on large-scale health events, doctors and public health advocates that are on the diocesan team to make assessments of when we can also safely gather. And on our meeting on Wednesday, all indoor worship is suspended for the next month. But we're hoping that as these numbers continue to come down, that we will start to do in, indoor services within the next month and a half. But our goal is, is absolutely to be having services, Holy Week and Easter in-person, indoors and outdoors. Obviously, outdoors is much safer. We will still have to wear masks. We will still have to socially distance. We still can't congregate for coffee hour. There are just lots of things that we can't do, but we can be together in, in some way. So we'll be having extra outdoor services on Easter as weather permits, and we'll be doing some indoor services if it's raining. But we will have to really think about, you know, what our numbers are and what those services are, are going to look like. Now, the team of, of scientists that the diocese rely, is relying on, they are unanimous that we should still not be worshiping in person. And there are, you know, there are lots of questions that people ask. You know, "Why do other churches appear to be regathering safely?" Well, churches that follow mandatory mask use, social distancing, and other safety protocols, they don't appear right now to be super-spreaders, but there's no scientific evidence to verify that. And our, our diocese and our bishop is relying on science. In fact, he wanted to move a little bit faster, and his team said, "No, there are still, you know, some uncertainties that we, you know, we don't want to risk getting our folks sick, particularly with the emerging variants that may be less resilient to mask use mitigation." Also, other denominations, they don't have the authority to restrict congregations from worshiping indoors. Our polity is that we obey our bishop. And so even if, if I think it's safe and the Vestry thinks it's safe, if the bishop says we can't meet, we can't meet. And so, you know, that, that's another reason why other denominations might be meeting, and, and we're not. Also, you know, just because we can doesn't mean we should. The large majority of scientists with a personal faith background who've spoken out nationally are continuing to advocate for conservative caution as we continue through the winter months and to wait and see what impact the new variants have. But I think we've got, you know, as soon as the diocese says, "Yes, go ahead", we've got good protocols in place so that we can start gathering in person. But you also need to remember, it isn't going to be the same. Services may be shorter. Some services will have no music at all. We're really trying to mitigate risk there because singers are super-spreaders, even with masks on. And so we may only have music at our live stream service and a distance between those that can actually attend that service. You know, some other questions that have come up is, "Why is it safe to go to grocery stores and restaurants or a bar?" It's not safe. Most continued spread is believed to come from family gatherings, restaurants, and bars, both of which involve indoors for sustained periods of time and with masks off. I was recently visiting my mother. I went this past week to see her. She lives in Florida. I was tested before I went, and I received a COVID test yesterday when I got back. And negative, thank, thank God. But there were folks there, crowded restaurants, no masks. I went to dinner with my mother one evening. We took a look, we turned around and left. So, you know, we really want to make sure that we're, we're making good, good choices. When regathering is allowable, we will have a limited number of folks within the church. A case rate below five per 100,000 would allow twice as many folks as would a case of 10 to 100,000. So we're keeping an eye on all of, all of that. Preparations for Easter and Holy Week are underway. And as I said, if indoor is allowable, we'll certainly be doing that. So as a, as a congregation, your vestry and our regathering team has been assessing risk levels. And there's still, you know, inoculated people may still be infectious to others. The jury isn't out on that either. So, you know, as, as the numbers drop, we are working towards getting back together. We will need ushers. So if you are, have been vaccinated fully and would like to be an usher, we would love to be able to use you in that capacity. Just as an FYI, the staff at St. John's, including clergy, most have received their first vaccination because we're considered support staff of the school. As, and then clergy have now gone into the 1C category. And so by Wednesday, all of the clergy will have had at least one vaccination. And so I just did, did want to share that with you. And the, Miller's Grant, the Lutheran village up the road, the chaplain there actually made some of those vaccinations available to the clergy here at St. John's. So this ecumenical work has been really wonderful. And that's still going on. Our interfaith and ecumenical work is still happening, albeit through Zoom. So that's kind of where we're at with, with regathering. We'll keep you posted each week. I think I announced in church today that we will have, distribute ashes on Ash Wednesday, and we'll do a service at noon. So that, that is in fact happening. The support staff at St. John's, the majority have received their first vaccination. I think we've got two, one or two folks that haven't gotten it yet, but we're, because they also work with the school population, they've been able to be part of the 1B category. So that's, that's basically what I have at this point. I'm going to leave the, leave it open for questions and be happy to answer whatever, whatever is germane to our conversation today. Okay, let's see, I don't see any, yeah, I answered the Sunday attendance question. And feel free to put something in chat if you'd like, that's, that might be easier for you.
Anne, I don't, this isn't actually a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Just a statement. The, if, for those of you who have been paying attention to the Howard County Board of Education stuff, they, they've lost, Howard County school districts have lost 1,600 kids from the school system this year. That's almost two schools' worth of students. And so those kids are going to the, to private schools, obviously. And so I'm, I'm making the assumption that we continue to see higher enrollment in the, the day school?
Yes. In fact, our classes right now, we've got a waiting list on all our classes, so.
Okay, yeah, I just, just wanted to verify that it still looked good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're doing, doing a great job with that. And our, our hope is that it continues after, after the pandemic. What additional steps is the church taking to let the congregation know we have a gap to fill? Ellen, I, I've already, I've gone out with one communication. I'm going to be addressing the congregation in a letter this week. But I did go out with one at, at the end of December. And so we'll be doing that one more time to let folks know. We're hoping that we'd have a few more on this call. But please, feel free, anyone who is on this call, to share with your neighbors that we do have a gap and that if St. John's and what we're doing is, is, you know, has, has some meaning in your life, we really need your help. So I think it isn't just up to the vestry, it isn't just up to the stewardship team, it is up to all of us to spread the word that we need help. So, thanks, Ellen, it's a good question. Kim Wireman asks, "Has COVID reduced the flow of new members to the church?" You know, Kim, I know we have new people watching, and I think we've had like six new members join the church, but our numbers are usually much higher. And so, you know, normally, we catch newcomers during the newcomer gathering. However, we are doing baptisms, and we've had a number of those this year. And so those are all new families and new babies. And so those are all additions to our congregation. We have had those, some significant losses. We've lost about 15 beloved members, and, and not all through COVID. So it's just, it's, it's been challenging. Anna Loomis asked, "I miss most of the financial section of this meeting due to youth leader commitments. I can surmise the message, but if there's anything special to reshare for those of us who missed the beginning?" Yeah, I've recorded this, and so what I'm going to do is post it. So if you have missed it, you get to see it. So that will be posted sometime tomorrow when we get back into the office. I have another question here. Are people who view services or complan later in the day included in our counts? Yes, they are, Pat. The 24 hours is what our, we've been told to count by the National Church. Our numbers this year for our parochial report, it's a report that we have to do to the diocese and the National Church, we only counted our in-person numbers to figure out our average Sunday attendance from January through March. But we'll be recording all of our, our services, that 24-hour period is what we count. But they also have to have a view of more than one minute. So that's kind of the, the cutoff for that. So, any other questions? Please know that you can email me, and I will get back to you if you have any other questions. You can call, you can contact members of the vestry as well as members of the stewardship team if you've got questions or concerns. We've got a wonderful leadership team. Also, if you are interested in serving on vestry, and in the, in the upcoming year, we will have our annual meeting in May, please let one of our outgoing vestry members know that you're interested or contact me, and we'll tell you what you need to do so that we can let the parish know that you're interested when we have our elections in May. If you look in chat, Jordan, our treasurer, has put in his email, and you can ask him questions about where we are with our budget, with the PPP program. And just so that you all are aware, I want to share this with you. Our new AV system for the church is being installed this week, which means that we will be able to livestream baptisms, weddings, funerals, our Sunday service with all of you in attendance, when we can do that without having camera equipment in the middle of the church. And so it really is an investment in outreach. And in the future, St. John's, and, you know, particularly for weddings, if we could do a wedding video and provide that service, that may be a way for us to, to generate income. So we are looking for ways to maximize the use of our campus in the coming year. But the bottom line, all that we do, we do for Jesus Christ, and we do it in gratitude for all that God has given us. And I, I really can't say more than that. So I'm just, just thankful that you've all been on the call. I do have a question on imposition of ashes. We are going to do ashes. You can drive up anytime from eight to six on the side door, where we've been giving out communion, to receive ashes in a prayer. And we will do our Ash Wednesday service. It will be on Facebook Live at noon, and it will be recorded. So if you want to watch that later in the evening, you can. But please come by for imposition of ashes. And, and so that you're aware, you can also do ashes at home. And so we'll have a little video on how to make your own ashes, but please come by for prayer. And we've got shields, and we've gotten all the criteria from a diocese that we need to make sure that we do it safely. So let's see, I think that's all I have right now. Why don't we close in prayer? Good and gracious God, in you we live and move and have our being. We're grateful for the many ways that you reach out and touch our lives. Help us to be faithful to the call that you have given each one of us. Guide us and guard us, and help us walk with you each and every day. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we offer these prayers. Amen. Thank you, friends. Good to be with you. I'm going to end our call. Thanks, Joe.